Right. But if you have two sheds in on the fire right then, right? It doesn't matter on this particular.
Do you think we're ready?
We are.
Everybody ready? Okay. I'd like to bring the town of Lopinger zoning board of appeals meeting to order dated July 14th, 2020. Can I roll call please, B?
Mr. Barr?
President.
Mr. Lawrence Zinnick?
Here.
Mr. Delaporte?
Here.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes, he is.
Mr. Delaporte?
Here. Okay, the first item on tonight's agenda would be the acceptance of the minutes from June 23rd, 2020. Has everybody had a chance to review and read those?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, any additions, corrections?
Well, fine.
All right, could I have a motion to accept the minutes as written?
Yes, I make a motion to accept.
Could I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. All right, first item on tonight's agenda would be a public hearing, appeal number 20-7703, Lauren and Brandon Johansson, seeking an area variance section 240-37 of district regulations in an R20 zoning district where 20 feet is required to the side yard property line. The applicant can provide 9.7 feet for the legalization of an existing above-ground pool, thus requesting a variance of 10.3 feet. Where 10 feet is required to the rear property line, the applicant can provide three feet for the legalization of a 10 by 12 existing shed, thus requesting a variance of seven feet. Where 10 feet is required to the side yard property line, the applicant can provide three feet, three feet for the legalization of a 10 by 12 existing shed, thus requesting a variance of seven feet. The property is located at 17 Sylvia Drive and is identified as tax grid number 6257-02-755812 in the town of Lopinger. Could I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Yes, I make a motion.
Could I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Hey Pete?
Yes.
Excuse me, I just want to let you know that it's 14 Sylvia Drive?
Yes. Did I say something else?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, 14 Sylvia Drive, correction.
Just for the record.
Correction. Okay, so Lauren and Brandon, you know, at this point, we ask you to come up to the microphone. And I, I think while you're at the mic there, you could probably hold down your scarf so we can hear you. It's a little difficult to... At this point, we ask the applicant to just give a brief description of what you need and why you need it, not only for our benefit, but anybody in the public who may be listening as well.
Um, yeah, sure. We, um, we, you know, requested the variance because we, we had structures there and didn't know that they weren't okay. And were informed by the town that they weren't within the proper range. So, you know, we went through, we did a survey of the property, everything, and, you know, we got the dimensions of our property and then we put them in the areas that best fit for the property. I mean, as you all saw when you came, I mean, the, the property gradually slopes all the way down and the, the two, the two spots where the shed and the pool are, are basically the only level spots that we have on the property where they're in our, they're on our property, they're, they're put there nicely. Um, and through drainage and runoff and everything else, we, we don't really have anywhere else to put the sheds and we also don't have any, any property really that they can move to.
Right. Yeah, we were, we were all, we all came and saw, you know, a site visit. We could see that topography, right? Certainly, certainly concerned. The structures that we're, we're speaking about tonight, they all exist.
Yes.
They're, they're in place already. I know when we were, when we were at the property, you had a question on whether or not the deck needed a variance as well.
Yes.
That is not the case.
Okay.
You don't need, you do not need a variance for the deck.
Okay.
Right, being that you are a corner property, if, if you may, I'll look, this is considered your rear yard, this is considered your side yard?
That's a good answer because I was actually reading it and I was like, is that the rear or is that the side yard?
Right.
I got you.
Okay, so it's a little funky when you have a corner piece of property. That being the case, you know, you wouldn't need the variance for the deck.
Okay.
Okay. So we were all there, we, we saw the structures, we could see topography, certainly concerned. Uh, do any other members of the board have any questions or concerns?
I do. When the swimming pool was installed first?
I'm sorry?
When the swimming pool was installed?
When was it installed?
Right.
I, I, I just put it up probably...
Six months?
It's like a stormy...
It's a stormy pool.
So within last couple of months?
Yeah.
Okay.
Not even the last couple of months, basically this month is when it was put up.
So that's the time you learn about side setting requirement, right?
Correct. Well, la- last year, when everything was brought to our attention that you needed to have this and this, that's when we stopped everything for that and, you know, everything happened. Life happened, went back to work, put the pool back in the garage, didn't use it. And then when it came out this year, we, you know, mapped the settings out where we could put it and applied for the proper procedures and put it up there so that we could get okay.
So now, so let me ask you a question. So the pool, it goes up in the summer, down in the winter?
It can, yes. Yeah.
Does it?
Does it, yes.
Well, it is, yeah.
Does it?
Yeah.
So it's, it's, does that have any bearing on the variance?
A pool is a pool. If it holds 24 inches of water, it needs a permit. You need the electric.
Right.
Properly put in and an electrical certificate at the end. How tall is this pool?
Forty.
Forty-eight inches.
Okay.
That's how much it will hold.
No, but as, as long as it's 48 inches high, it doesn't need a fence, but it will need the alarm and it will need the electrical so that we can close it out.
Correct.
Understood, okay.
And how about the shed? Looks like shed was removed from one location to this new location?
Well, initially, we were, we were going to have it there and then that's, that, we couldn't, we couldn't have it there, so we just, we just moved it over.
So it was never installed on old location?
No.
Oh, I see, so just pre, prep for it and then?
Correct.
Put it here.
Correct.
Yes. I think at one, at one point there, what, there was an existing shed, but it wasn't on your property.
I'm sorry, what was that?
At, at one point, there was an existing shed, it wasn't on your property, right? Then had to be moved?
Correct, yes.
So that's, that's the same shed?
Correct.
Oh, I see.
Yes.
Correct, got it. Okay. Any, any other questions from any other board members? No? Okay. The note, I, I opened the questions up to the floor at this point in time, but I see there's nobody here, so let the record show there are no nobodies to, to comment on the application. Uh, that being the case, could I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make that motion to close the public hearing.
Could I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved? Okay, at this point then, could I have a motion to grant or deny the applicant, the applicant a variance?
Before we do that, we ask opinions for discussion among us. Uh, I have concerns with the shed being moved from one locations and put it still, it needed various, I think it should meet the requirement, that should be moved to meet requirement. The pool, I'm okay with it, but my strong opinion about the shed being removed from one location, that was the time should, had met requirement.
Gotcha, gotcha.
So by giving one person three feet, I'm sure everybody else will like to have in the town, to have center place more open. So I think we should think about long-term impact, it's not only one property. We have to think about as a board, we should think about impact of everybody else.
Understood. So at, at this point then, would I have the board vote separately on the variances? Okay, so, so we can do that. So what I, what I will do is I will ask for a motion to deny or grant each variance separately. Okay?
Okay.
So we'll do that. So let's start, we'll start with the pool. I say, could I have a motion to deny or grant the applicant the variance for the pool?
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to grant the variance for the pool. This requested variance will not produce an undesirable change because of the nature of the property. It's surrounded by woods, so I don't think it will change. And your corner lot is sort of stuck up in the back corner.
Yes.
Um, and again, no, for that same reason, no substantial detriment will be created for the nearby properties. Um, for the pool, I don't see another place that you could put the pool on your property that you already have, the pool that you already have.
Right.
Would better if you had a smaller pool, but because of what you already have, that I don't believe that you could move that. Um, the variances are substantial, they're, they're quite substantial actually, you know, more than 50%, I think, which is huge. Um, but again, because of your property outline and where you're located, I'm gonna to allow that to be granted. Um, and it, and again, the proposed variances for the pool will not have an adverse impact, impact on the neighborhood because of where it's located. Um, the, and the last one is the alleged difficulty is or is not self-created, in this case, it's self-created. I'm sorry, Lisa?
No.
Oh, okay. Uh, so the alleged difficulty is self-created, you put the pool up and you put it in the wrong spot, but in this case, I'm gonna say to go ahead and, uh, grant it. So both of the variances for the pool, the 10-foot required to the rear property line where the applicant can provide three feet?
No, that's for the shed.
Yeah, it's just the one.
Oh, okay, I apologize, yep, okay, so I lost my place. Okay, so, um, where 20 feet is required, applicant provide nine, 9.7 feet. So again, it's 50% of us, so.
Okay, all right, so I have a motion on the, on the floor to grant the applicant the variance for the pool. Could I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, can I have a roll call please, B?
Mr. Barr?
Uh, vote yes.
Mr. Lawrence Zinnick?
Yes.
Mr. Delaporte?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Delaporte?
Yes. Okay, second variance, right? All right, could I have a motion to deny or grant the applicant the variance, needed variances needed for the existing shed?
Yeah, I will make a motion to deny variance for the shed. And, uh, the variance will not, will not produce any undesirable characteristic change in neighborhood, but will have impact on all area in, uh, Wapinger, Wapinger Falls area because we are, the space is available to meet the requirement, but choose not to put it. So I would say it is possible we can still meet the requirement, so should move, have 10, 10 feet distance. It, it will, it... It will have, variance will have substantial requirement is from required 10 foot to three feet means seven foot is significant requirement, but half a foot or something, yes, but having seven foot variance on 10-foot requirement is significant.
Okay.
The variance will be have adverse impact, no, does not have adverse impact on environment, but is still by rule, laws required to have 10 feet. So I would say, yes, we should have denied that we request for the shed.
Yeah, I have a, a question.
This?
If we, we have a difference of opinion, do we vote first and then express that difference of opinion?
So you have a motion pending. Um, the proper thing is to see if there's a second for the motion and then you have a discussion on the motion prior to voting on the motion.
Okay.
So the first, the next point would, Shaleesh has made a motion, so you want to see if there's a second for the motion.
All right, is there a second for the motion?
In, in order to second the motion, does that mean that we agree or disagree?
Not technically. You can discuss the motion in that, in, if you want to. Alternately, if there is no second, then the floor would be open for someone to make a motion to grant, which would require a second and then you would have a similar discussion.
Okay, so I'll second Shaleesh's motion.
Okay.
All right, so a, a discussion. Um, take, you know, being, being at the property, I understand where Shaleesh is, is going with this, you seem, it would seem to be with the size of the property, there would be some options in the location of the shed. However, topography of the yard, right, very difficult to do that. Plus you also told us that you have some issues with flooding in certain parts of the yard. So if you were to find a, a level, a more level spot lower in the yard, you'd be subjected to the flooding. You could see where you have the shed now, you have it elevated up a good foot and a half to two feet, I'm assuming that's to keep it out of the water.
Yeah.
Right? And, and you could see how the, the property, the topography of the property all slopes down toward that back corner. You know, that being said, I, I don't have an issue to where you have the, the shed located now, you know, based on the topography and the, and the hardship basically that the, the topography creates for you to find an alternate location. So I, I, I would then, I would make a motion to...
Wait, you still have a pending motion, so you need to see if there's any other discussion on this motion.
And?
And then at that point, you would call the question. So either vote, and the vote would be to deny the variance. If that motion doesn't pass, then you would have the option to do an alternate motion, preliminary procedure.
Any other discussion on the floor?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
About, I'll wait till Shaleesh's, I, I don't have any more discussion, but I have a question. So, Shaleesh, you have more discussion?
I agree with your opinion that yes, but the shed was recently moved. When recently moved, it could have planned better. It was existing for a few years and now somebody looking to get various, so to make it official, I think that's a whole different story. But being recently moved from one location to other location and because moved, because was not meeting our town requirement, so at that time, it should be clear that it is required 10 feet, not three feet. So that's the reason I'm just still insisting that, yes, I believe we should not do that because everybody else will like to have same thing, that let's put it at two feet space, so I have all central area open for kids to play.
Understood.
So there is reason why we have the rules for on a, on a, on a paper that we have to require, so just my saying.
It, it also seems like the site could have been, you know, regraded potentially to alleviate...
Yes.
Like I, I get that it was kind of at the high point of that back corner, but I mean, that, that can be adjusted.
Mm-hmm.
It's obviously a lot more work, but it's something that could have been done. I think there are means to achieve a legal position on the site. Uh, you know, he's not, it's not that locked in.
But there certainly is means to do it, right? Is, is it feasible? You know, is, is another question, it's one of the criteria, right? If it's feasible, anything can be done, right? But it's, it's at, at, at what price, you know, at what cost?
The public hearing has been closed, so there's no more public input or applicant input. It's just the discussion for, by the board for now.
So that, I mean, that, that's one of our criteria, right? Is it feasible? I, I think that has to be weighed into, into our judgment. Any other discussions?
I would only put in that, I mean, when we were at the property, I definitely noticed the, the slant of the property. I, I can imagine the water that runs through there, I can only imagine. And the fact that the abutting properties were 100% woods, there was nothing that it was encroaching on. And I understand, I think when you had your survey done, correct me if I'm wrong, the pro, the, you realized the shed was off your property.
Correct.
And then you just moved it onto your property.
Correct.
Okay, that, that's all I have.
Tom, you have a question?
Yeah, if there's no more discussion, I just have a question. So Shaleesh asked for denial. How do we answer a denial?
So if you agree to deny the motion, then the vote is yes. If you think that the motion should be granted or not denied, then it's a no, and then there would be the option for an alternate motion to be made.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So at this, at this junction, then we should have a roll call.
Correct.
Okay. B, can I have a roll call please?
A, a point order, Pete. I, I'm not 100% sure of motion that he made. I'm sorry, I apologize.
He, he made a motion to deny the variance for the shed.
Thank you.
So we're, we're voting now on denying it. If we say yes, that's denied.
Correct.
Yeah, if you, so like Lisa said, if you agree with him and you want to deny it, you vote yes. If you don't agree that it should be denied, you vote no.
Thank you.
So we have a roll call, please, B.
Mr. Barr?
Uh, I vote yes.
Mr. Lawrence Zinnick?
No.
Mr. Delaporte?
No.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Delaporte?
No.
So then that motion doesn't pass, so now the floor is open for someone to make a different motion.
Right, so I, I will make a motion to, to grant the applicant the variance for the shed. Uh, I don't believe the benefit can be achieved by, you know, the feasible variance based on the topography of the property. Undesirable change in the neighborhood or detriment to the, the character of the neighborhood, no. As John had mentioned previously, your, your, your property is pretty heavily wooded on, on most of the sides, you know, the, the, would be the side in the rear yard. The request is substantial, however, in percentages, will not create any adverse effects to the neighborhood, but the effect, the difficulty is self-created, however, not in my mind enough to deny the variance. So I am going to make a motion that we grant the variance for the shed.
I'll second that motion.
I asked for a second. So John, second. Have a roll call please, B.
Mr. Barr?
Uh, no.
So in this case, in this case, B, just for clarity, B, in this case, a yes means to grant variance. Go ahead, sorry.
Mr. Lawrence Zinnick?
Yes.
Mr. Delaporte?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
No.
Mr. Delaporte?
Yes. Okay, so your variance has been granted. I, I think there's some paperwork that may go along with that. That, that would be from B. And I think we're good, right?
So just for the applicant's sake, there's no paperwork at this point, you have a building permit. So at this point, Vio Gunti is gonna do her magic tomorrow based on their votes. It will go to me, I will take my denial, make it an approval, and it will go to the building department. At some point, we're really busy in the next week or so, you'll get a call that your building permit's either ready or if they have any questions.
Okay.
So there's nothing for you to do unless they need more information.
Okay.
Yeah, so you're all set.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Appreciate it. Have a good night.
Sure. So the, the second item on tonight's agenda, the applicant...
You want to wait a second and we'll swap because let the applicant come in?
Oops, sorry. I don't think anybody's here.
Judy's due for magic.
Comes the cleaner.
Get her stuff here.
You have to see her at the planning board.
Oh.
We have a lot of people talking.
Messing up through a packet of... Oh my God, yeah. Point the number.
Okay, so the second item on tonight's agenda, the applicant is not here.
They might be in the hallway.
Oh, in the hallway? Oh, okay. Oh, wonderful.
We have social distancing.
Oh, come on in. How could I forget? Come on in. We had everybody, we had the whole crew here tonight. Oh, the whole fan club.
My goodness.
All right, the second item on tonight's agenda is appeal number 20-7704. Scott and Amanda Ryder seeking an area variance section 240-37 of the district regulations in an R15 zoning district where a minimum of two acres is required per large farm animal or multiple small animals in a residential district. The applicant can only provide .4 acres, thus requesting a variance of 1.6 acres to allow chickens. The property is located at 5 Orchard Drive and is identified as tax grid number 6257-03-285455 in the town of Wapingers. Okay, could I have a motion to open the public hearing, please?
I make a motion?
Have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so moved. Okay, so this is where we actually ask the applicant to step up to the microphone and basically for the, for the board's benefit and anybody else who might be listening in, are exactly what you need and why you need it. Brief descriptions, fine.
Okay, so, um, my family, my husband and I would like to have, um, a small backyard, flock of hens, no roosters, um, keeping it under the amount of 10 hens. Uh, in theory, the, a hen is requiring square footage. Um, our, our land is set back from the road quite a bit with a fenced-in yard and a six-foot privacy fence behind, so they're, um, pretty, you know, well-hidden, I would say. They would be, um, also protected from possible predators, um, with extensive research we've done in building our own coop and a, a run, which would be about 10 feet by 10 feet, giving them about 100 square feet. Um, for chickens, they require, I think I wrote it here.
Would you mind if I, if I make mine, is it okay if she, you know, you pull your mask down so we can hear you a little better?
If you're comfortable with it.
It's difficult to understand you.
Okay, so, um, we would be able to prep them with the adequate square footage that a chicken requires. Um, in our current zoning, um, for them to require two square, or two acres per chicken is also the same as a cow. So I'm asking for a variance in this, but I'm also presenting a petition to possibly add in a zoning and permit the inclusion of backyard flocks of hens. Um, I have over 258 signatures in support of this and, um, I also have lots of feedback from that where, um, lots of other people have shown their support and very good reasons why, why these are, um, a great addition to our community and also being able to regulate that, um, with better codes that are set for that rather than trying to press the variance and pull strings.
Gotcha. We, we were all at the property, just, just for clarity too, I'm not quite sure what you said. The variance is needed for multiple small animals, not, not one?
Right. Yes. Yes, it would be for the flock of hens.
Yes, correct.
Yep, a flock of hens, no greater than 10.
No greater than 10.
Yeah.
So that, that's basically the count, you're probably be around 10 or so?
Yeah, yeah. With, with excluding roosters.
So just for the record, it's two acres per large farm animal, but you do need a minimum of two acres for any farm animal.
Okay.
So multiple chickens wouldn't require two acres per chicken.
Oh, okay.
Under the current code, but just...
Okay, I think in my original email I got in when I started the whole, all, you know, rolling, it was sent to me that it was two, two acres per animal, but either way, the chickens require square footage, not acreage.
And the other issue is the petition is, would need to go to the town board?
Okay.
Because this board wouldn't, does not have any authority to change the legislation.
Okay.
So, but they can note that the petition is and...
It's a process.
Right, but it's a town board rather than a zoning board.
Thank you.
All right. I would also, before we open the, I'm going to open the floor up to comments by the board, but before that, I'd like to acknowledge a letter we recent, recently received from an Andrew Olivieri at 92 Ardmore Drive.
Yes.
Um, he, he writes a letter, and he is opposed to, to having the chickens, but I'm not going to read the entire letter, I just want to make a note that in the record, he did submit it and we acknowledge the letter.
This morning, I took a walk, actually, well, started to take a walk, and I saw him out in the front lawn, and we had a discussion about it. I understand his concerns, and I've done lots of research in ways to protect against predators and the reality of what the cons could be of...
Sure.
Of owning a flock.
Sure. Okay, so like I said, we were, we were all at the property last Saturday, I believe it was, and see what's going on, see how your yard, your setup, your rear yard, front yard.
Yeah.
And I don't know if any, open the floor up to any comments or questions that the board may have for the applicant.
I have a question for Lisa. Uh, 92 Ardmore is pretty far away from 5. Is it 92 Ardmore, Mr. Yes?
Is it back up to you?
We're not, we're not just, there's a property between us.
So is he abutting your property?
No.
No.
I sent it to, I had a list of four addresses I sent it to.
Okay.
Yeah, so he was one of those, but...
He, he was one of those?
He was, yeah, but he's two houses down.
But he's, somehow his property...
It's not adjacent, it's just a real property.
So the legal...
So they're small lots.
When you do a legal notice, it goes to properties, is it within 200 feet, Barbara?
It's 100 feet, but they may be shallow properties.
100 feet, so any property that touches, so he's within 100 feet, but he may not be adjoining or adjacent.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Gotcha. Any other, the other questions? You said something about a run, what, what's that exactly?
An enclosure, where they're not free to run in my yard, but they will have space to run, that's like a dog kennel with a roof, so they can't fly out or something fly in, large enough for them to roam during the day, but go back into their, back night, they wouldn't be in the run during the day.
The chicken tractor, you had a chicken...
Yeah, the chicken tractor.
Chicken tractor, it's like a, it's like a moveable...
That's that last pen in the...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
That's first time I've seen one.
Got it.
B, would you like me to handle you?
Okay, any other questions from the board? Board members, concerns, questions?
I have a question, I have a question.
Go ahead, John.
Um, have you or your husband ever raised chickens before?
Uh, yeah, actually, we have been, uh, his parents have had chickens, his grandparents have had chickens. I grew up across the river in a farm community where I've been around a lot of cows, not chickens per se, but we have a lot of experience with that.
Okay, that's all, thank you.
Okay, do we like to open up any questions or comments from anybody in the audience who might be able to? If you, if you'd like to hang on one second, we had a little, little hiccup in procedure now. Okay, please forward, come forward, please. I'd save your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, my name is Crenna McGann, I live on 3 Orchard Drive, Wappingers Falls, I'm the Ryder's neighbor, so, I'm in full support of them and their chickens. I actually, I came here to also speak about changing the, but we're home meeting, I guess.
Right, that's, wait, submit a petition to the town board, and there will be an opportunity there if they entertain it.
Yeah, so I'll save pretty much most of what I was going to say for that, thank you, and then I'm in full support, I know I'm their neighbor at least, and I, I think it's a great idea for them to have chickens and...
Gotcha. Any other questions or comments for us?
Um, no.
Okay, thank you, thanks for stepping up. All right, I don't believe there are any other folks in the audience that may want to, may you want to comment.
So I just have a question, since you're going to buy chicks, what would you do as they grow if you wind up with roosters?
Um, I have connects with other farms that would be willing to take, um, take a rooster. There's lots of other reasons why a farm would be a rooster, and not maybe like ours for the reasons we need to be, we all need to be roosters.
So just for the record and for the board, we get numerous complaints every year in, especially in small communities of chickens, from a lot of residents. And so, over the years, we've had to have many residents remove the chickens.
Okay, thank you.
I may speak on that too, a lot of places, people are as, and you end up with a rooster. It rarely happens, but if it does happen, no refund.
Well, the complaints are either...
So provide you an opportunity to create somewhere, whether it's...
And I'll just clarify, in your case, you're looking for a run where they can't fly in this, in a lot of the complaints, the chickens free range in people's backyards and becomes a large problem for us.
Right.
And that's part of why the code is written the way it is, so in very tight communities of small lots, not everyone enjoys other people having fowls in the backyard.
Okay.
Well, I misunderstood something then, I, I thought you said the chickens would, they're going to be out of the coop, coop portion of the run during the day, but not in the yard.
Right.
Okay.
Say that one more time.
It would be out of sequence portion, but it would be in around, not out in the yard.
Okay, the, the chicken tractor deal is got a coop, or, I remember from the phone call, coop and fenced in here, and I just thought they'd be in the yard, but they're not going to be in the yard.
You can move, you move it around the yard.
Move it around, the chicken tractor goes around the yard.
Understood. Okay, so to open no more comments or questions or concerns from the public, I would make a motion to close the public hearing?
So, before the board does that, if you make a motion to close the public hearing, then you need to make a decision on the motion within 62 days, and I don't know if the board has information that you may want, I'm, I would recommend that if you were inclined to grant something like this, that certain conditions be put in place. Many other municipalities have done this, such that the coop has to be cleaned at a certain regular intervals, there has to be no odors, and just many usual things like that. So if the board were inclined to grant it, I think it would probably be helpful, and you could do it either by closing the meeting tonight, and I could do it for a future meeting, the next meeting, or you could hold the public hearing open, and I could do it, but I would recommend an evaluation of some conditions to be put on.
Sure, sure, and so that, that being the case, then we would close the public hearing and not render a decision.
I'm sorry, we could close the public hearing and...
We could close the public hearing but not render a decision.
Right, you have six, from once the, the meeting is closed by law, you have 62 days to render a decision.
I, I think that's a valid point, me personally, don't know a lot about chickens, you know, or roosters and, and all that go with that, and I think that's a very good suggestion. So I, I would suggest that we would make a motion to close the public hearing, but then ask council then to provide us with some additional material, additional materials so we could get, I'll say, educated a little bit more on chickens, so we can make a valued decision. All right, so I would ask then the board to make a motion to close the public hearing? Do you have a motion?
Yeah, I make motion to close.
Have a second?
I'll second that.
Favor?
Aye.
All right, so moved, and I would also ask that we then reschedule or, or would be postpone a decision to the next meeting until we get some more information on, on chickens and what to expect and not to expect.
Do, do we have the town board looking into this issue also then, is that what the petition is?
Not at this time.
Okay.
Just not before the town board at all?
No.
It will be, it would be at the point where the applicant submits a, their petition, and then it's up to the town board whether they want to entertain the petition or not and consider changing the zoning. Based on past precedent, I don't know how likely it is, but it may be because of the number of people that are now doing this, looking to do it, you know, it may be something the town board will look at, but that's not something that this board can take into account necessarily because it's speculative at this point whether the legislation would change or not.
And you said we have 62 days to make...
When you close a public hearing, a board has 62 days to render a decision. So on any public hearing that you close, if you want to think about it for another month, you can take the time to do that, if you want to revisit the site before you make a determination, but you, once you close the public hearing, a clock starts, but you definitely don't have to make a decision on the same night you close a public hearing.
Okay.
Yeah, I think this would understand what is impact of doing it before we really vote for it, so I would suggest...
Sure.
We should delay, get some more education about it.
So the public hearing is closed at this point, and we will get you folks on the next agenda, I would think?
When is the next agenda, makes me always wonder?
Is it enough time?
Uh, what's the one after that?
Yes.
August 11th?
That'll be good.
The 28th, the 28th is a pretty packed agenda, right?
That's going to have Tarpon Towers on town.
The only thing is, for August 11th, I may not be, I'm hoping to be in Maine.
And I won't be here July 28th, for the record.
Um, so where are, what, this is July, so what's the meeting after that? I would also like to have the opportunity to give the board some material...
Yes.
Not night of the meeting, and have you have some time to look at it.
Sure.
So the term of the conditions, is that what, it would be conditions on...
Right, I mean, I can tell you what other municipalities have done, I can tell you, there's other things about, you know, certain requirements, like rodent-proofed containers for the feed, making sure it's cleaned, all the, you know, there's some standard requirements that should be part of any...
Sure, so then potentially then, then we, so we have, we're at the 28th and the 11th then?
What's the one after that?
25th.
So that's only 30 days from now, well, a little bit from now, so we're still well within our 62 days, so we'll do that.
So when, when we put this on the agenda then for August 25th?
Okay, will you put it on there?
No.
No.
Okay, so that's, that's what we'll do, so we can have a better understanding of what, what's going on, okay? Okay, all right, thanks for coming out tonight.
No, what I'll do is, sure. Actually, is it on the application? It probably is, right.
So, no further business for the board tonight, could I have a motion to close the meeting adjourned?
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn meeting tonight.
Second?
I second it.
On favor?
Aye.
So moved, we're adjourned.
Good.
Thank you.